Wow.
Evening, I'm going to open the March 6, 2024 Woke Select Board Meeting. And we begin this meeting in March, right after town meeting as always our organization meeting. So first order of business is to elect a chair for the ensuing year. Have any nominations?
I'll nominate Linda Martin for Chair, like to second that.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Deb, can you hear us okay?
Yes.
Okay. An election of the Vice Chair.
I nominate, watch his face, sitting over there. Go for it. He has Vice Chair.
No, second that. Any other nominations for Vice Chair? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Election of Clerk. Nominations for-
That was me.
Yeah, see, wanted Richard.
Oh, what the heck? I was only called on once last term, so.
Nominate Richard for Clerk.
You have a second?
A second.
We have a first and a second for Richard as our Clerk. Any other nominations for Clerk? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Congratulations to everyone.
Thank you.
The next order of business is to adopt the Select Board Rules of Procedure. It's something we do annually, it just sets up how the meeting is run and.
Uh oh.
Now we do this every year. Talking.
No, I just, we lost sound just for a minute.
Is it the same as last year we're going for?
Yes. Want me to pass them around, we can come back to it?
No.
So our Select Board Rules of Procedure are not changing unless someone else proposes any changes to them and we can take them up next time. If not, we'll have a motion to approve our existing procedure.
Make that motion.
In a second.
A second.
Okay, we have a first and a second to adopt our existing Select Board Rules of Procedure, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried, thank you. And I'll see that y'all get a copy, I'll pass them around for your signs to sign. We need to set the date and time of our regularly scheduled meetings.
So first and third Wednesdays of every month, right?
Right, at six.
Six, yeah.
Say what? At six PM, yeah.
Is everyone comfortable with that?
Yes.
So we'll keep our same time as first and third Wednesdays at six at the Woke Town Office. Designation of the newspaper for our notices for people to look at. Well, we have two choices, we have News and Citizen or Hardwick Gazette.
Which have we been using primarily?
Usually primarily use the News and Citizen.
Because everybody-
Assuming more people see the News and Citizen than the Hardwick Gazette.
The Hardwick Gazette has kind of changed their format now, it's free.
Only online though.
Only online, I think they are trying to have a paper copy coming out soon, but there's no subscription, I'm not sure what's going on.
Okay, so. Let's say news and citizen, then. Say we have an online platform.
Yeah.
For work forum and everywhere else anyway, so.
So the board's in agreement that we'll continue to use the News and Citizen as our designated newspaper for notices.
Yes, yes.
So we need to set the mileage rate for the ensuing year for town employees who use their own vehicles for work related.
Was it fifty-five last year?
No, I don't think so, did Belinda leave?
I think it was fifty-eight. It's a door shift.
It's, well, the federal rate right now is point six seven cents. The state rate is point six five cents. If you're patient, I could look up in order and see what we're paying.
Own house, Michael.
Okay, the mileage. It looks like it's point six five five. That we're currently paying. That's the state rate.
I think that's good enough.
Yes, point six five five.
I make a motion, we leave the mileage at the current rate of point six five five per mile, fence per. You needed a motion on that.
Yeah, I think that's good, do we have a second?
Subject.
We've seconded the motion, any further discussion on that? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Adjustments to the agenda, does anyone have any adjustments to the agenda?
Linda, can I just throw in, is the board gonna discuss the website invoice for Bradley?
No, there was a discussion.
Okay, I just wanted, we have submitted it for payment. And I just want to make sure that's okay to go ahead with. Forty-eight hundred dollars.
What did you say, forty-eight hundred dollars?
Yeah, for the year.
Well, four thousand eight hundred dollars.
I believe that's right, I'll double check it, but.
It's on my desk. Well, it was coming out of ARPA.
Correct, right.
I don't have it on the agenda and I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, that's fine.
Any other adjustments to the agenda? I don't have any. Moving on, comments from the community.
Or did you want to approve the minutes?
Yeah, I skipped that, sorry, thank you. All right, we need to have a motion to accept the minutes of February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
I make that motion.
A second.
Do we have any additions, corrections, discussions on them? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Now it's comments from the community. Does anyone online like to speak? No. Okay. Correspondence then. I just wanted to let you know that I sent a little blurb on Front Porch Forum about that regional discussion about long-term blood protection. See if anyone's interested, I did get three responses. Jim Ryan, Bruce Wheeler, and Phil Wilson were very interested and so I forwarded their names on, I guess they'll start meeting on March twenty-first for the Planning Commission. I wanted to, I thought we should have this on rec, on the record for the Select Board because it says a copy came to us, but I never saw one. It's just our two thousand twenty-three equalization, equalization study results and it kind of tells us what we're discussing yesterday with the school, but I wanted it on the record here that Woke's common level of appraisal now is at seventy-eight point seven-two percent. And our coefficient of dispersion is twenty point six two. Usually the triggers are, well, they're saying the CLA, LA below eighty-five percent, I thought it was eighty percent and then COD over twenty percent is not good either, that means that is quite a despairing between prices of homes, you know. They're not, it's not consistent, I'll pass it around if anyone wants to look at it. And the other thing is, I just got an email from the Vermont League of Cities and Towns saying that President Biden has just signed a major public assistant disaster declaration for seven Vermont counties for the December flooding, including Lemoyle. I have reached out to Dylan to see if there was any damages over five thousand dollars. I'm not aware of anything other than that got really flooded, other than the Corley Road.
Yeah, I'm not aware of anything either.
Right, but I just wanted him to let us know. Okay. We're on to bids for the Town Hill Road Tamrec Brook culvert. This is a FEMA job that has been put out to bid. Our regular engineer has been working on this for quite some time. We are working closely with FEMA to consider this project for repair plus mitigation to upgrade the culvert at the Tamrec Brook. We've had a pre-bid meeting, the bids have gone out, we had last Friday, we had the bid results. J.A. McDonald Incorporated came in the lowest at five hundred ninety-nine thousand. So the engineer is asking that the board accept that bid on behalf of the town with the understanding that it will only be awarded if FEMA awards us the money for the repairs and that went out in the bid also, people are aware of that, that, of that. I can pass that around for people to look at, but I need a motion to-
I'll make a motion that we accept that bid of five hundred ninety-nine thousand from, was it McDonald?
Yes.
For that, for that project.
Okay.
I'd second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? I'll pass around the whole bid package here. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. See that Hayden's on our, on Zoom and I'm wondering if, no, it's the Project Manager's Report, sorry. I might have it myself.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so just an update on insurance claims, we are nearly complete with VLCT. We received two additional checks on Monday. Much of that went to the fire department and there are two more truck repairs for the fire department still pending along with a garage door opener. And that should be it, those have already been signed off on and accepted, so it's just a matter of waiting for the check from VLCT, so I believe we're at the closing point with VLCT. As far as FEMA goes, we have been working on a number of projects, one of them is the mitigation project for the fire department compressor. The other, as Linda mentioned, is the Town Hill Tamrec Brook project. We had thought that a FEMA representative had done a site survey, but learned today that that's not the case, so I'm gonna bump that up as to our highest priority with FEMA to get the narrative put together on that project, so we can move that forward. So my focus for the rest of the week is going to be the Town Hill Tamrec Book Culvert. After that, we also have the Rec Field, which is, we have put up on a higher priority, that's now number three on the priority list.
We're gonna be starting our pre, pre-bids on East Hill and Town Hill slope. And I'll put out to bid the Flatiron Road this week, I hope.
Right, okay, good, yep, yep, yeah, we had thought that the site survey had done the slopes as well, but that doesn't look to be the case, so those are also going to have to have a FEMA puts together a pretty extensive narrative on what happened in the disaster and what action we took to do either a repair or a temporary repair. In the end, we're gonna have about a five-hundred-page book here.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yep.
So we have Hayden on the, on the Zoom, Hayden, would you like us to bump you up?
That would be great, if possible.
So Hayden's here from the Trust for Public Land, I sent you earlier through email conceptual plans for the trail and the whole thing about.
Thanks, Linda.
Yeah.
Um, so my name, for those who don't know who I am, my name is Hayden Smith, I work for Trust for Public Land. We are the project lead for Woke Community Forest. And I'm here tonight to present the revised conceptual trail plan presented by Sinuosity, they're the professional trail builders that are contracted to build the trail system on the future Community Forest property as well as a short connector trail on the school property down to the athletic fields. So I'm presenting the revised plan since the original trail design, which was done for the VORIC grant funding that was submitted by Trust for Public Land in the town. So the major changes that have happened, well, mainly following the devastating July floods that happened last summer, Sinuosity realized that the plan to construct the pedestrian bridge over Elmore Branch, it's really no longer feasible. The flooding showed that the design wouldn't hold up against future impacts from stormwater damage like that and the budget and the funding available from VORIC wouldn't cover the cost for a bridge that could structurally withstand that type of future damage in that site, so Sinuosity has decided to pivot away from a pedestrian bridge at that location and are now deciding to reroute trail users to follow Flatiron Road, cross the existing school street bridge to get over to the athletic fields. So still the final destination is to get people to the athletic fields, it's just gonna take a reroute to follow portions of the existing road. The other changes that are relevant to the Community Forest, there's been a shift to refocus trails behind the elementary school, so there's a little less trail mileage on the western portion of the Bedell property and more trails located directly behind the elementary school on that section of Road of Bedell's Land. I'm happy to share a trail map if that's helpful for anyone to, I have it pulled up.
I think it'd be good for those people who are online.
I'm ready to release the mission.
Okay, let me see if I can share my screen. All right, is everybody seeing the trail map?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. So yeah, so the major changes that are on this new revised plan is this no longer a bridge over Elmore Branch, which I just highlighted, and more trails located in this section of Road of Bedell's property rather than up in the southern section, higher elevation areas adjacent to the Bourne property. This is more going to be kind of dispersed public recreation, no designated public trails in this area for, for. Still maintaining the trailhead parking at this location here, this location down here on the south where the existing bridges. So those are the major highlights on the revisions that have been made. Next steps for the plan, so Sinuosity is looking to receive approval from the town, that's why I'm here tonight, and approval from the Conservation Easement Coalholders, that's Vermont Housing and Conservation Board and Northern Rivers Land Trust, both of which have received the same information on the revised plan. And Northern Rivers Land Trust has had a discussion with their board about it and plan on approving that this month and we've sent everything to Vermont Housing and Conservation Board and are waiting their approval as well. Once we get approval from the town and the stakeholders, the Conservation Easement holders, that gives the green light for Sinuosity to move forward with the permitting that are necessary finalizing the project budget, which will help guide our conversations with VORIC because with this revised plan, we'll need to amend the grant agreement between Trust for Public Land and the State of Vermont for the VORIC funding. So once this trail plan, revised trail plan is approved by all, those conversations can proceed again. This will also, approval of the plans from all the parties will also allow Sinuosity to continue to implement their implementation plan, which is onsite flagging and essentially preparation for trail construction once the property is acquired by the town, which we hope happens this spring to allow Sinuosity to go out and do what they need to do, which is the, the on-the-ground trail construction work during the work season this summer and fall. So that's pretty much it for the revised trail plan, like I said, these are the changes since we submitted the VORIC plan and were asking primary stakeholders like the Town Select Board, Conservation Easement holders, Vermont Housing Conservation Board, Northern Rivers Land Trust to approve this final conceptual design, so Sinuosity has the green light to proceed with what they need to do to be prepared to start building trails once this land is owned by the town.
Why did you decide, yeah, why did you decide to concentrate most of the trails on, I don't know which side, but whatever the-
Are do.
Yeah, that's a great question. That mainly came from comments that were made by the Stewardship Committee. We've had a couple meetings where Sinuosity sat in on monthly Woke Stewardship Committee meetings and conversations happened where people were requesting trails that were easily accessible to the elementary school but provided multiple kind of avenues for trails in this section of the property specifically. And as well, they requested a loop trail in these southern open fields owned by Bedell that are accessible across the bridge, so with a loop trail down here in the, across the bridge on Bedell's Western Parcel and these existing trails here behind the elementary school, that pretty much makes up the full five miles of trails that are allowed and permitted with VORIC funding, we're not allowed to exceed five miles and that pretty much does it.
You're not allowed to exceed that. Who's not allowing you, our Conservation Easemen, our Vortex Grant, VORIC Grant, who's not?
Yeah, that was written into the VORIC grant that we would construct, construct up to five miles of trail.
All right, so it doesn't prohibit the Stewardship Committee from future trails?
Yeah, that's a great point, so it doesn't restrict the committee to pursue future trail additions, any future additions to the trail system need to be approved by the Conservation Easement holders, but they fully have the ability to go out and create new trail just with that prior approval. There was, Sinuosity did look into potential avenues for, and I can pull up a separate map. Let me just stop sharing really quickly here. There's an additional map that shows a potential Phase Two that Sinuosity mapped out for proposed trails that Gordon Young had brought up in a meeting. Let me pull these up really quickly for you all. Okay, so this is a map that shows a red trail here, this is what's called the Westover Right-of-Way and Loop, which would essentially create a trail from the town offices, the Lemoyle Valley Rail Trail, Trailhead along the Westover Right-of-Way, which recently has been amended to a very well-maintained woods road and then provide a loop trail down here at the northern end of the Bourne Parcel. This isn't within the scope of the VORIC funding because there's not enough funding or available trail miles to incorporate it into the plan, but it's something that Sinuosity mapped out as a potential Phase Two down the road if the committee would like to look into trail funding and pursue additional trails on the future Community Forest down the line.
These are walking trails or some walking trails?
They're designed to be multi-use, so there are definitely certain trails, like the existing Woods Road that's in this orange color, parallel with the school boundary. These are really designed to be kind of open pedestrian walking trails. This one, on the other hand, with a lot of zigzags and switchbacks is meant to be kind of more mountain bike accessible, but every trail that Sinuosity is planning on constructing is, is multi-use purpose, not for one specific demographic or trail function.
Did they allow for any trails for disabled people? I don't know the right terminology, but.
ADA accessible trails.
Yeah.
Yeah, none of, I mean, the, the trail that goes along the trailhead parking could potentially be feasible for- Yeah, none of, I mean, um, the, the trail that goes along the trailhead parking could potentially be feasible for ADA accessible. ADA accessible trails are more expensive and they're they're fantastic and they're typically very well-designed, but they require more uh trail materials, either crushed stone or fine gravel um on the surface and make sure that they are a certain slope, a very easy topography. Um, and that's difficult on a property that's pretty much sloped. Um, so it was something that has been brought up in past committee meetings, and I know that's something that Gordon Young has brought up. The idea of potentially creating um ADA universally accessible trails on this property at some point in the future, but none of these are scoped to be suitable for that use at this time. Yeah.
So the um US Forest Grant, they don't require anything like that?
No, they don't. They don't require it. Um, they certainly are open to that. But it's not a requirement and um they really like to try for, for projects funded by the US Forest Service through the Community Forest Program. They like to be able to provide flexibility to the town to be able to activate their properties with trails as they see fit. So really, when it comes to future trails, if they're gonna be ADA accessible, it's really input from Northern Rivers Land Trust, Vermont Housing Conservation Board as the Conservation Easement holders on where those trails would be cited, what makes the most sense um for their approval.
Were there any questions? I'm gonna ask a few questions.
Are you, are they thinking about, when they use, if you're using a piece of the Flatiron Road there, are you thinking about signage to let people know maybe that there could be pedestrians using it?
Yeah, that's also a great question. So um, and thanks for calling that out. I forgot to mention that. So would this reroute? If this is approved by the town and everybody else, um Sinuosity plans on reaching out to the Walkit Transportation Department um about what trail use would look like along that section of Flatiron Road and across the School Street Bridge, whether that be additional signage to help inform um drivers or um traffic that, that sections on the side of the road are used for this trail. We don't know exactly what that looks like until those con- conversations are had by Sinuosity, but Sinuosity plans on having that conversation with the town members at the tran- with Transportation Department about um what's feasible for them to be able to guide people and pedestrians safely um to the athletic fields. That's really the only feasible way to make the school trail connector work. Um, it's gonna follow the same path that it was scoped out originally down to the road. Um, it's just the, the best and easiest way from both a cost and a design standpoint is to guide people along the side of the road. Um, and ideally that involves more really clear and obvious signage. What that is, we don't know until that conversation is had between Sinuosity and the town department. My understanding as a follow-up to that, my understanding is that Sinuosity would like to have that conversation soon. With the understanding that this is the plan that we're moving forward with, they'd like to start reaching out to members of the town within that department sooner than later. Same thing with the permitting. They're looking to try to get that moving as soon as possible. And, and make sure that we're ready to go when the time comes to start building trails.
Any concerns or any other comments for Hayden before we approve this or not? It was the board's pleasure of adopting the um trail design that was presented to us.
Want a motion? I'll make a motion that we approve this initial design. For the town forest trails.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Uh, to approve the um Wooka Community Forest Trail Plan presented by Sinuosity, Sinuosity. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? So carry. Y'all set with us then Hayden?
I believe so. Thank you for your time tonight. I appreciate it.
Yep, thank you. Okay, um, town meeting review. Well.
I'd like the Australian ballot for the town officers to wait six hours. I don't mean waste, but it took six hours. Where now it's within by ten minutes, two hours of hashing out the uh budget and we're gone.
I would be interested in seeing um something like what Tom has for when you fi- uh fill out a building permit, an information sheet. You know, things like the deadline for getting your uh petition signed and, and all these different avenues and things that it takes to do this, right?
In a days.
Thankfully, you guys and Linda kind of have held my hand through this process as someone who has no idea or had no idea what has to happen. I think it would be an interesting thing to put together just a single sheet. Uh frequently asked questions, think of, hey, you're interested in getting involved. Here are our meetings. Here's how you act. Come to them, be a part of it, watch a few. These are the things you need to know to sign up and, and run.
Right, and, and I think, I think that um not everyone uses Front Porch Form, but it could be on Front Porch Form, but it could be in the newspaper. High Parks was, didn't I go to find High Parks ad to tell you with a date that, that they had to be in? So I, I think it'd be who's, um, we can't tell what to do, but encourage her to do more outreach um for, because it's really that responsibility there in that department.
I mean, it, some of it, you could leave up, always posted here or even at the post office.
Yeah.
Yes, people go in.
Right.
Get their mail, get
A lot of people go in, yeah.
Send stuff. And if it was posted here, at least you would be able to say, oh yeah, that's what I gotta go through to be a candidate or how to get on to this website.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I've only been here a few months, but it seems like the community involvement in our twice monthly meetings is generally pretty low. Um, I'm wondering if some of that responsibility is on, I don't know about us, but on the town as far as making sure that everybody is painfully aware that we're here and that we're doing it. And that we welcome community input. Please join, please say thing.
So are you saying like that we should put a notice of our meeting or our agenda on Front Porch Form?
Honestly, I, I think that we haven't had the new website long enough and know whether or not the new website is going to increase that accessibility. To me, the old website was hard to navigate.
Yeah.
Uh, the new one is leaps and bounds above that. And I'm hoping that 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 that's going to increase engagement. Or awareness, I guess. Uh, my biggest thing is just you know, a single-page document. I don't know if that's something, I know your plate is full. Um, but if I were to put something together and have you kind of review or have the whole board kind of review and make sure that it makes sense and that it's accurate. Um, if we could maybe get that posted on the website as well as a potential candidate. You know, frequently asked questions or something.
Right. Well, it probably should be like, put on the front page. Um, you know, by the end of December, you know, as a news thing. I had Bradley put on the one about voting and the, because it wasn't even there. I said, well, why don't you put on that we're gonna, there's a lot of new people in town that we meet at the school and this is when the polls open, so I had him put that on the front. I think it should be on the front of our website.
Yeah, on, when the
And then a link to those forms in our documents, because those, the forms are on our website.
Yeah.
But you don't know to look for them.
Right, and you know, I'm not sure when it says, my, my feeling when I read through that and it said, um, I believe the form is the, the candidate consent form like that. You know, I looked at that and I looked at the petition that comes with it. I'm like, I don't know if that's for somebody running to be dog catcher or, or running to be select board or it's just a, a fillable form for any or all of the positions. Um, and I do, I think it was Belinda that said it last night, something about you know, posting it on, in the paper that you just said as well. For the turn of the new year, if we were able to post that we were looking for new candidates to run.
Maybe the open positions for, that are coming up.
Right. And I know in, at town meeting, uh, Bill Cotton had a lot to say, and I, I would like to go up and talk to him and get a few of his ideas. I do have a plan to go do that this weekend, so. I'm not sure, because I see his concern. I, I see uh him and, and the guy that sat behind you, Eric, I don't know who that was.
Bruce.
Yeah. Uh, you know, I see, I see the concern. It's, it seems like a barrier to entry. Nobody knows how to do it. We should eliminate that. It's within our power. Make people feel like they're welcome to join, because it really is wonderful when you get here.
So I, I truly believe that um in transparency and, and letting people know how to navigate the system. I am not in favor of uh spoon-feeding them because they can't help themselves. So if we can find a middle ground.
Yeah, there does, there is a certain level of problem solving required to do this, so it's nice to know that you can do some of that on your own.
And change is hard. And change is confusing. Pretty soon in a few years, it won't be changed anymore, you know?
Yeah.
They'll have figured it out.
But I do agree, the Australian ballot, to me, is certainly quicker.
Well, it's fair.
Yeah.
I think that if someone wants to run for an office, that they need to take the initiative to make the effort to get fourteen friends to sign a petition rather than just naming your neighbor off the floor with no experience or desire to hold that office really.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Have you guys ever considered now that the meetings seem to be shortened? It seems to be around two hours, maybe a little less?
Yeah, it's a little longer too, yeah.
What about a Monday night meeting? Or the Tuesday morning?
Well, actually, I was thinking about that as I was driving home, whether having it at, in the evening, with early evening, whether um more people would come out. And I could kind of keep myself not asking that, you know, nine, non-binding what the people there felt, whether that would be easier, or would it be harder for people with little kids, they have to get a babysitter and the kids couldn't come, or I thought about it, you know?
People who don't wanna drive in evening?
Well, I was talking to someone that is in Berry City. They do theirs on a Saturday at ten.
We have done it on Saturday before. And it was a total flop. Um, we had it Saturday, uh the school moved theirs to May. I just, just
There's all, is Australian ballot, so it's just basically you go in and my thing with Saturdays is it's the only day stores are open.
Yeah.
That's the only day you can go out and
Something.
Yeah, that joke.
Yeah, actually, that's, uh, what an interesting idea. I meant to ask something and I'm not sure if it's meeting related or if it's just something I could ask later, but um Chan was talking about uh the candidate night where, you know, potential voters could come in and, and meet people who were running.
Well, he's welcome to have one. I mean, the last one we had wasn't put on by the select board. There's nobody
Like I say, I, I
Venting anybody from doing a candidate's night.
I say, I, I never even attended one or heard of one. I didn't know what they were like, what their reception was. And I'm wondering actually if how it would work for potential candidates who have filled out the consent form, you know, have a volunteer at the dump for a day. How do you meet more people in this town? You work at the dump.
Right. So um, we used to have candidates that too, because we didn't have Australian ballot. And the law used to be that when you went to the polls, you couldn't campaign. You, you couldn't campaign at the, at the polls and people couldn't get, weren't supposed to get up and talk about themselves or, you know, what they had to offer. So we would have a candidate's night you know, before the law changed, but everything's changed now. Um And we also would go through some of the uh questions for budgets and stuff. When there was a lot of controversy or questions.
Kind of a preliminary town meeting, meeting over budget and talk with candidates for a little while.
Yeah, because you couldn't. But now you can. Talk about candidates in, in the same place, um, in the same place you're voting. They've eased up on a lot of stuff.
Deeper than mud season.
Those are, those are my two primary takeaways from, you know, like I said, being the most recent addition to the board. Uh, having very limited experience and then hearing the commentary from those who wanted to speak. That was, those were my big takeaways. Everything else seemed pretty non-contemptious.
Also seems that half the town comes and does the Australian ballot and half shows up for the actual meeting portion. About a hundred odd people. And then was there another hundred odd?
Yeah, I think it was a hundred and three that were at town meeting, Belinda said. Which is pretty normal. I mean, I haven't seen more than maybe um, except when Belinda and I were running against each other. I haven't seen more than like a hundred and twenty maybe at the most ever at town meeting.
I've seen it times it'd only be sixty.
Right.
Which is kind of sorry.
A hundred and three is pretty good.
Yeah, right.
When we have two hundred and sixty.
People don't participate in their government. They're not gonna have one.
Yeah.
They have no choice. I, I've got a couple of my adult children that are voting. I said, your vote does matter. Enough people like you go in and vote, you will notice a change.
Joe didn't seem to want to have an end. Town meeting, I got that feeling, he just kept.
I think if he'd asked if there was any new business, that might have helped.
Right.
You just keep saying, is there any change to the budget or something, that's not.
Right.
It's not the, you know, way to go at it.
Okay. Anyone else? You want to move on?
Yeah.
We have a, uh, woke at store liquor and tobacco license to approve things.
Have, have they changed, Dan?
No, they have not, and it's been delayed again, so, um. Their current license expires April first. So they're nervous, they're going to. They've applied to, uh, the Department of Liquor and Lottery. Things have changed now, it's all online, you don't even get a, a form, I said, well. How do we know whether they had any violations? And Belinda said, well, they wouldn't have, uh, approved it for our approval if they had any violations against them.
I make a motion then that we approve the renewal of their license.
The woke store.
And that's both their second class license and their tobacco license. We have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Roof town and road standard certification, this is something we need to do every year, um. It's a form, um. Saying that we've adopted the, um, state June, the two thousand nineteen state approved. Road and bridge standards. And also that we have an up-to-date highway network inventory. Um, I wasn't sure about that, so I reached out to Dylan, he wasn't sure about that, I reached out to Jim Ryan, he said. We had one, um, it was probably coming due for renewal soon. I reached out to Alex at the Planning Commission. And asked him to, um. Just be alerted that we would need a grant to upgrade that shortly, and he was gonna look into it for us. By adopting this, when it allows us to get more money from FEMA when this, um. Disaster, but it also, we need it or allows us to get state grants if we don't.
So we're just approving the previous set of standards, right?
Yeah, we approve, I have a copy here from two thousand twenty-two that we all approved, I'm not.
I'll make a motion that we approve. The town and road standard certification. As listed for previous approvals. I guess.
We got, uh, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Do we have, um, any questions, do you want me to pass it around again? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. I'll pass this around, um. Their signatures. Air exchange for town garage discussion.
I reached out to a few other companies looking for. Uh, other interested parties, I've heard nothing. I am going to continue reaching out so that we can fulfill our procurement policy and get three bids or at least three refusals. So that we can discuss further what Lloyd's presented. When they were here, um, and with the generator, I am still left with just the two, uh, proposals. One from Wayne's Electric, I remember that being eighteen or nineteen thousand. And then one from Brookfield Service that was closer to eleven to replace the generator here. The third party still hasn't gotten number two yet. And the, the, one thing that we're lacking is no one seems to be willing to. State that that generator is near the end of its service life. Uh, to determine whether or not we truly are in need of a replacement. Uh, and that's where we stand with those.
Maybe if, if you sent an email, did you send an email to other people here?
Yes, I filled out their electronic contact forms, I'm gonna make sure that. Things have gone through and follow up with phone calls.
You, um, want this, I, I'll make a new copy, um. I guess if you sent them another email and dated it and gave them a deadline, and then that email would serve as, um.
It's a refusal.
You know, that, that, it, it, that we apply, you know.
Uh, you mentioned the generator, right?
Yes.
And we pretty much decided to get it repaired. What was it, eighteen hundred bucks, something like that, I can't remember.
It was, yeah, I'm not sure that there was a motion or anything.
There wasn't a motion, we just weren't sure that it was, uh.
Service the repair and then get the numbers and figure the best option.
Yeah. Yeah. Like, so the, I was waiting on, um, all wired up, and I still haven't heard anything, so.
Nothing's saying it couldn't last another year, go for the pairs and then figure out. With the best.
Yeah, I don't want us to be pressing our lock, but if it's. It's not an end-of-life, near-end-of-life situation with a generator.
As I understand, they test it every week, we, I didn't have power this.
Self-test.
Yeah. I didn't have power this morning, I have no idea how the town offices did, but I was without power between three and six thirty.
Yeah.
Oh, we.
If it's off for a half an hour, it kicks over.
It was three?
Yeah.
I wonder when it was, I woke up and I said.
Once the electric side was fine.
Thanks, I just borrowed further under the blanket, so that.
So we have this estimate, you know, maybe when they come, we can, uh. Ask them if they would, um, give us a, do you think? They would give us some kind of a idea?
I would think that the tech might, you know, just I, I would be wary of asking a salesman whether or not they'll sell us a new.
Yeah, the salesman's gonna, I'll get right up there.
You know, a, a tech, a savvy tech might be able to say, well, this looks a little off and that looks a little strange, or, say, no, it looks great.
I mean, being propane, it should be in good shape, the engine, but it's the electronics. Once they get to a certain age. You just can't get the parts.
I think that was what their pair was, it changed the electronic screen of it.
Replace the controller and oil pressure sensor on the.
Now the controller is the electronics, right?
Right.
Like I say, I don't want us to be. Taking a major chance and having a fail on a critical time, but if it's. If a modest repair. Is gonna give us, uh. More than a few more years, that'd be wonderful.
Well, and, uh, as, as I recall from our budget discussions, we have some money. Not only budgeted for repairs, our building maintenance, but there's also. A fund balance. Uh, you know, if we were left in the lurch and it decided to pack up and quit. You know, the cost to replace currently is around eleven thousand, say it only, say it went up. You know, a certain amount, we still can afford to replace it that time.
Yeah.
It is always a gamble, right?
It's too bad they didn't have an upgrade, yes, so the electronics. Because I mean, it's basically, it's just propane-run engine.
Now, this is our Generac, right?
Yep. Yep. And both of the quotes that I got were switching from a Generac to a Kohler. I, I guess Kohler is the new brand that Brookfield deals in, so.
I think they were saying that. Generac is getting problematic on. Our supply.
Yep. Yeah, that was the rumor I heard.
Not good.
Either way, we still need to get more info anyways. As far as, or the, uh. Refusals?
Yeah, as far, as far as I'm concerned, um, I think that those two plus the. Non replied from the third party, that, that fulfills, in my eyes, that fulfills what we need, um. The question is now, do we move forward with a replacement? Or the repair? Is how I view that.
Yes, the, uh, my question would be if they could upgrade the electronics and be fine for another five to ten years, or.
I think they can't. I think that that's what this, I don't know about upgrade, but certainly replace. Uh, I think that that's what this. Light trailer repair is.
Could, um, that question, see what they say maybe?
Yeah.
Well, I can write it right on here and then sign it and have Belinda send it to him.
There you go.
And so what are you asking them to do?
If, if there's an upgrade to the electronics rather than just replacing. Because I had a vehicle that, oh yeah, the main computer died, we'll put the same thing back in, but it's only good for about forty thousand. Uh, no thanks. Yeah. That's Toyota. That's why I don't buy Toyota.
What about asking then, um. What they think about the life of the.
Yeah, uh, where we stand in the, in the unit's lifespan. Average lifespan.
If he thinks it's not good for another five years.
Be nice.
That can be.
See what they say. Do we have anything else?
Yeah, I had a question, what happened to the optic fiber that was run from Crasberry onto Townhill? Did that ever get completed?
No, I don't think it has been completed, the person who knows the most about that is Bruce Wheeler. Um, he's on that committee.
I say it's not gonna help.
No, it, I don't think it's happening, it, it might happen this summer, but it, is that when it's happening? Yeah.
So I know they've been running it from Woodbury down through East Callis into North Portillo.
It seems to be a lot of fiber optic work through there, going through Cabot area too.
Did we kind of slide over the air exchange from the town garage, or?
I have, I have no updated information from that. You have the.
The thing that, I really wished I had more technical understanding. You know? I, I definitely don't want us to. Cheap, cheap it out to apply with us any health risks. They have enough health risks in their work as it is.
Right, the nature of it.
If it's out on the road or, or in the garage, and. I, I have no idea which of the three.
The, the concern, and again, we don't, I haven't had any response from anybody else, so I'm not sure what the alternatives to. The three systems Lloyd presented us with. The concerns I have with those is, what do we do with the run? Um, I'm certainly not a fan of adding fifty gallons of flow a day, potential of fifty gallons of flow a day. To the septic system over there, I have no idea what the.
You had to go, have it go like out the wall to, on somewhere it would drain, preferably not septic.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm also not a huge fan of just letting it. Letting it go across the parking lot or, or dealing with having to trench it out in daylight, a drain somewhere, and I'm not sure what the rules are. On any kind of discharge leaving a building like that. I'm sure if it were just condensate, we probably could get away with it, but. Um, I know things like floor drains, I believe we have a separator over there. Um, a system for that, I'm just not sure. How involved the state would be in it.
You're right, that could be an absolute nightmare.
You know, and I just, I just don't believe, not knowing what the infrastructure is over there, I just don't believe that adding fifty gallons. Potentially fifty gallons of flow to that septic system is a good idea.
Water table is very, very close.
Right.
So.
You dig a foot, you hit the water.
Those, you know, those, that they were talking about removing the humidity from the building. I worry if we're. Just trading one evil for another.
We don't want that.
No, why, why spend forty thousand dollars to find a new problem?
Yeah.
Upsizing the vent fan definitely sounds like a. Idea that would definitely be worth it.
That would be something that I think that we should ask, and, and I'm happy to take that on, something we should ask Dylan, how much that gets used and whether or not it. Is even helpful, you know, again, that was a thirteen or fifteen thousand dollar option. If they never turn it on. Why?
Why use, use the money?
Right. You know, if, if that one is a manually operated thing, it comes down to whether or not the guys are gonna use it.
I mean, if they start up and run a truck inside, they should.
I'm sure that they, they do a good job, but. You know, and, and other things, welding and things like that, but.
We could always get a manual small unit for the welding. Which would be a lot better than using a big fan sucking all the heat out.
Yeah, again, I don't know enough about. How their daily operations are over there.
Right, I don't know much, how, how much welding.
And how much of it's inside. Well, in the winter, it would be all of it, I hope, they're gonna say.
Summer time outside, probably be nice, a nice sunny day to weld some.
Yeah, I know I've gone by in the summer and seen all the baiters.
Yes, always in the summer.
Right.
In the winter, mostly they're plowing and then they go home unless they have to.
Yeah, break.
Work on a, a truck or something.
I mean, I can check with the, an air gas down there, see about a small. Exhaust unit.
Yeah.
Their welding.
Well, and this, this all started. Um, talking about the town, this all started. Mostly because of the, the dustiness and the siltiness from the flood, it was my impression that they were looking for something to improve air quality, but. The more we learn about it, the more we think about it. The more I wonder whether or not that's really what they. Were trying to achieve over there, I mean, humidity. Humidity was never really one of their concerns, it's humid in the summer, it's humid everywhere you go. The concern at that moment, as I understood it, was particulates, they wanted to filter the dust and. And things out of the air. You know, a- again, not knowing. Not being in the shop all day, every day, I don't know if that really is an active concern, or. If it was just a byproduct of the flood.
Yeah, see, that's. I can tell you, in the winter, running my furnace with a good filter. It's a lot different than the wife leaving the windows open. Next to a road.
That is true.
Oh yeah, dust is just.
Or if it's, if it's actual filter, not dust bunny filter, it gets about everything, it's wonderful.
Did you get over sixty degrees now this year?
Yeah.
No problems. Shit, if I'd had that happen up there, I'd get in the car and drive south till I ran out of gas. You'd never hear from me again.
Uh, yeah, so as far as the, the air exchange goes, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to continue pursuing, but. I'm. I haven't really heard anything else from the town guys about indoor air quality. Since that discussion we had after the flood.
I mean, aren't they at least cleaning up the. I don't, what do you want to call it, from the trucks when they come in?
Prud.
Prud, the. Excess muck.
Yeah, as, as far as I'm aware, they are, yeah.
Still, I mean, if you're using a, a shovel. That doesn't give you. That doesn't give you like a vacuum cleaner with a HEPA filter.
Right.
So you can't really. You're gonna put in a system that's gonna do what you want to do, it's not gonna last but two hours because you're still gonna be stirring up. Breathe. Kind of does ask if you want to knock the humidity down. And you have it closed, right? It'd be easy to put a dehumidifier that you plug in and run in there and just let it run in the winter.
Well, and winter time humidity, I can't imagine would be a concern of theirs. I mean. Yeah, they're dragging these wet nasty trucks in and letting them drip, but. I think they're, they're never in the shop. I mean, with the exception of breakdowns. They're either in the trucks or they're at home waiting to be in the trucks. So I don't know, I'm. I'm not certain. I haven't heard anything back from. Other suppliers and I haven't heard anything from them.
Wasn't trying to put you on the spot, I was just.
Yeah, no.
Sorry about it.
Yep, um.
And it's hard to make a intelligent decision if you have no damn idea what.
What they're actually asking for.
But I mean, on the other hand, I want them to have safe working. It's a bit, yes, and and that'll come back and bite us in other ways that will be less pleasant. Well, I mean, it's just a matter. It's the right thing to do.
Yeah, they're gonna.
Does their office have a deep, does that office have an air conditioner in it for the summertime when they do close the doors?
I don't know.
No.
No. So even a dehumidifier would help half there. Any potential issues that would come up, you just plug in the wall?
Think. Yeah, I.
Then that depends on how large of a unit you get.
Yeah, what and what their goals are. I guess my biggest question is, having not heard anything further about. Indoor air quality from the town guys, I'm not sure what the town, the highway department's goals are. Uh.
And that's the other thing. Even if they leave the overhead doors open in the summer, some drives, it's a dust bowl.
The nature of the work is dusty. There are all kinds of OSHA and MSHA things that I'm sure that they're following. Um, you know, to protect themselves from from that.
Kurt, do you remember who suggested we look into an air exchange was the man who came for the the mold specialist?
Yeah, it was him. And also I think the union initially uh suggested something of that nature. Um, they were, when the mold first was discovered. Um, I think that's when the question about these particles came up. Um, as far as I know, now that the build out has been done, that tear out of the walls and the replacement. Um, I have not heard a thing from uh the highway department or the union. Uh, about the filtering. Um, yeah, you probably want to go and speak with Dylan and the crew directly, but um. I honestly don't think it's an issue in their mind.
So I'll um, I'll reach out to them and just and just see whether or not they're still interested. Uh, and what other goals they may have. Something like that.
All right. Not that they're interested, of course it'd be interesting.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Just don't, like, don't give them the option, just find out if it's an issue that they needed.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Otherwise you can tell them it'll have to be deducted from their highway budget.
We'll take it out of their class three.
Yeah.
You guys want a plow truck or do you want to shovel the road? Uh, holes.
So that brings up another thing, if we can step aside is. What's that road uh from the Elmore Pond Road?
Uh, when we were talking about class four policies, was it Fos Road, was that?
Yeah, Fos Road.
Because. What we had the, you remember this road up here?
Turcot.
Cross from the Turcot.
Oh, you mean Pinnacle Lane?
Pinnacle Lane. We had them upgrade it to the class three. Before we allowed it to be taken over.
Right, but they don't, Fos Road, people don't want us to take it over.
Right. I think it still comes back onto them. It's. The, my other question is, are they able to connect onto the road that Belinda uses? To get out on the quarterly road?
I'm not sure, very difficultly, but I think you're gonna, I I know what I'll do. I'll bring, I'll bring the stasho in. Next time and you can read it, um.
It's really vague.
It's vague, but it's um. Basically, it says that we have to, they have to be able to get in and out. In my mind. It doesn't have to be the Taj Mahal or class three standards, but they have to be able to get in and out. And if their culverts destroyed, they can't get in and out. Um. But we don't have to do much else, but um I think it's probably a good idea. It's on my list at the bottom of the pile. Except to print that out and have you have a chance to.
You're talking class four, I can understand.
Yeah.
Right, it's not cheap and they need a culvert and I guess we can handle that, but it's uh.
But I think um it's, we were gonna redo the class.
Update class four road policy.
Yeah, make it a little clearer. It is kind of vague too.
Yeah, I don't know that it would be a bad idea to call out specifically what our responsibilities would be.
Right.
I mean, I could see we would be somewhat responsible for culverts if they're to a certain standard to start with.
Hmm.
I mean, if you're talking like I was saying, that section past the Turcot Road, which had. Drainage pipe, three and six inch, me, that's not our problem. They should have at least had it brought up to a eighteen or twenty-four inch culvert. Then I could see us replacing them or helping them fix them. But when it's. Loggers, it just throw whatever they can to get drainage enough to go in and out, so they're not sinking in the mud. I don't think it's really our concern.
We can't afford that, it would be our concern without raising, having to affect the taxes for everyone in the town. And.
Well, it's like I was saying, if if they bought the culvert and we had the road crew go in for two or three hours and put it in. Get it so it's draining through it right on, proper. It's better than, you know, a thousand dollars is cheap.
Yeah.
And you're talking four homes.
So in these um. Standards that we just adopted, our our state highway standards or whatever, there is a call out here. Uh, the standards for class four roads, we have to stabilize any areas of gully erosion on and on and on. Um. Disconnection practices such as broad based dips and water bars may replace cross culverts and turnouts. So I don't know that we necessarily need in every case to put a culvert where a culvert may need to be. We can achieve that with a water bar.
Mm hmm.
Right, um, according to this.
This is a stream.
Right.
This is a perennial stream. This is a culvert. It's gotten a, I'm not sure if it had a hydraulic study or not.
Probably hasn't.
Um.
But I mean, it has been my understanding, I mean, my dad has worked in. Highway construction and things forever. It has always been my understanding and his as well, that class four. Means the town does infrastructure things like bridges and culverts. Um. I just, I couldn't find that anywhere.
Neither could I. I couldn't either. I was at the day at the library.
I mean, not to be particularly harsh, but you're gonna build in a class four road and. Yeah, you really need to understand what you're doing.
Yeah, part of that is on the homeowners to understand.
And it's, you know, it's on you. You know, you build up there. You know, your gravel depth and you get traction and maybe the land's a little cheaper and whatnot.
A little more secluded.
Yeah, but. You know. A small town like Waukegan just can't afford to take on all that. All of a sudden finding out we're gonna be maintaining class four roads. I would rather tax our three man road group for a bit, back maybe beyond tax. It's uh, they're pretty busy on the class threes.
Okay, I'll get that for you. Um, so mull over. Uh, one more thing before we leave. Anyone else doesn't have anything? Um. Deb wanted me to let you know that the um community guard uh was able to um. Obtain a grant from the Vermont Garden Network and the Vermont Urban and Community Forestry Program. And they were awarded five hundred and fifty-two dollars for, they're gonna purchase two cherry trees.
Nice. North Star, I hope.
I don't know. You can talk to Deb.
Oh, Dan.
And um. We'll just need to go over where you want to plant it because it seems to like be a lot of different things going on in terms of. Conceptual design for the schoolhouse and and parking. I'd hate to have you plant it and then chop it down.
Inside the fence, definitely.
Yeah.
Um, well, that might be a problem. Uh, there's a lot of ledge in Depot Park and so. Uh, uh, I know that from when the Girl Scouts donated the two little. Stick sized apple trees and uh where those apple trees are. Were the only spots uh where that could go in. And so, um, yeah, we can get two. You know, based on the grant, we can get two cherry trees from Elmore Roots Nursery. And so according to their website, they do seem to have at least had in stock. Different varieties and so, yeah, if they have North Star, sounds good to me, but. For five hundred and fifty-two dollars uh for two trees, these should be good size. That, you know, was my. Intent uh when writing up the grant so that we don't have to wait, you know. Too many years before these bear fruit. And so. Uh, yeah, I anticipate we're gonna need some sizable holes. Uh, I think the concern. Uh, something that was expressed by Linda Brady is uh with uh future plans for parking. Uh, the schoolhouse and uh so, yeah, whether there may be. Uh, parking designated for employees and things of that nature, but. Uh, I have been led to believe that there may be a a a projected parking. Plan or at least options available by the time of the next. Uh, uh, schoolhouse revitalization uh meeting. And so I just thought that would be something that could be taken into consideration. When trying to determine the best spots to plant the trees.
From what I know from that ground area, from growing up here, Deb. If you could put it on the fence towards the rail trail. That's where you're gonna find the deepest soil.
What fence?
This, the fence over by the rail trail. Inside.
Um, inside the garden?
Yeah. That's where it's the deepest. But if you can get a North Star or uh, I can't remember the other variety. Because the North Star is a sour and then there's another one, it's a sweet. Variety and usually the North Star within a year will start producing.
Okay, yeah, um, we'll have the committee uh, you know, work or, you know, talk with uh Elmore Roots. Uh, so that we have a good understanding of what the options are.
Right.
And also they wanted to um say that they were very grateful. Um, they were able to raise a hundred dollars for eating food. That's a, that's a good take. And? Anything else from anyone?
Lots of chili dogs for breakfast.
You should have supplied bibs with the chili. I was challenged. It was good though.
If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I will make that motion. It's a good enthusiasm.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Kurt seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Hey.
Great.
You was like, oh, it's long.